All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock. It is the appointed hour. So if you can take your seats and we will begin. Thank you so much. As you know from reading the report, tonight is -- there's a lot of work involved. There's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of facts and figures. It is part of the Kaiser Revitalization Project. This is a grant that we have received from -- I always get a little fuzzy on who's giving who what money. But our consultants is from OTAC. We have David Helton from ODOT here. And importantly, we have the Planning Commission and the City Council. So Debbie, instead of calling Rome in order to save time, Debbie is just making note of those who are in attendance and we will then begin. So as you know from the report, there's lots of charts, lots of maps, lots of numbers. It's -- especially the first part of it is very daunting. As you understand, this is valuable information that we have got to digest to figure out what the course of Kaiser is going to be in the future. We are looking to the future. We're looking to see how we're going to implement the goals that we have established. This report is draft. We ain't done yet. We're still in a -- this is a big project and we have a lot of work yet to do in this whole thing. So tonight, we're going to be looking at big picture kinds of things. These are not recommendations that you're seeing. These are simply three different alternatives or scenarios that show us that we have our existing conditions, our existing zoning picture. And what does that lead us to? Where is the outcome to that? How does that get us to our vision, our goals of to what we've -- where we want to be? So this project has had a lot of work put into it already. There's been a lot of citizen's outreach and we have met with a lot of different groups. Most of that work has been to try and verify that the goals that we have adopted are still valid, that they still apply, that they are still basically the goals that Kaiser wants. And for the most part, they have been verified. That shouldn't be too surprising because they were established with a lot of input. And you know, even though the world is crazy, we still have our same identity of Kaiser. So with that, just keep in mind that this is big picture stuff. We are not making decisions tonight. As you know, this is a work session. You couldn't legally make a decision if you wanted to. So we thank you for your time. We know this is a sacrifice. We know that this is pretty heavy lifting. You guys have done great work and we know that you will continue to do great work. So with that, we'll turn the time over to our consultants and I will set the microphone back there.
Thanks Nate. My name is Glenn Bolin. I'm a consultant with OTAC, planner, working in Portland. And I am with Kate Rogers with Angelo Planning Group, another planner here in the state of Oregon. So I'm going to use some slides to highlight this hefty tome that you printed out in your packet. As Nate mentioned, we started off with stakeholder interviews, with public open house, working through the goals. At that time, I'm just going to go through a few of the slides that we used then. We went through just some background materials, looking at what the project purpose was. And this is focusing on promoting transportation alternatives, more mixes of uses, alternative shopping, alternative living type situations. More, we use the word density, it's a terrible word in planning because it means so many things, but really, we know empirically when more people work and live in similar places, that our needs to drive go down, our ability to walk, bike, take transit, go up, and the levels of investment in the community stay and rise in a small area. So these are some of the goals that kicked off this project. We are looking at the River Road corridor roughly, but really looking kind of originally with this kind of three major nodes. But we're -- while most of the land that is really zoned for commercial and for multifamily is right along the corridor, we spread our net a little wider because really, River Road is accessed by people on foot from nearby, there are development opportunities, people when you build apartment complex, a couple blocks away, you're doing it because of that proximity to those things along River Road. So we pushed our boundary a little bit as we did our research, a little bit further than that. So there's about 500 feet either side of River Road roughly. You can see it kind of meanders a little bit and actually 500 feet of the commercial and multifamily zoned land, so the higher intensity zoned parcels. So it's a little over 1,000 acres, about 20 percent of the city. So it's, while it's only a fifth of the city, it's the majority of the city's jobs and activity areas. Couple thousand individual parcels in there. And only about 50 of them are more than five acres. What this means, if you think about when you go shopping and go to an apartment complex or housing development, they're often on bigger pieces of land. So the fact that we have a lot of smaller ownership can make development a little bit trickier. So that's something we track and look at this. It also means a lot of these things are, a lot of lands are developed. And so looking at adaptive reuses and redevelopment, different things that can happen on existing development are going to be pretty important. When we look to see how much vacant land there was, there really isn't much. And unless you're a developer, this isn't probably something you notice when you drive around or bike around. But most everything has got a house or some kind of building on it. So we looked at, the first thing we did though, was say, well, those are where there's going to be some opportunities. And then we also looked at some pretty, there's some parcels out there that are pretty good size with very minimal improvement values. So it means could be a property that has a shed on it, so it's going to not show up as vacant by the county, but we know it's pretty much a vacant. Or it could be a large parcel with one house, but that might be a farmhouse where that person might look to eventually sell and do subdivisions or something, something larger. So we flagged those as well. And you can see on the little pink dots on the map behind me then, this is the areas that we saw as clearly would consider vacant land. Yeah. Yeah, sure. Gotcha. No, no, it's a, thank you for letting me know. That is one of my weaknesses, I get excited, so. So we looked at the rates of growth and you know, we're tracking similar to other parts of the state. What's really interesting though, about the changes we're seeing in Kaiser, the population is aging. And a lot of that, and I can speak to family in the room who have, you know, college age and then children that have gone to other places and not getting a big, what kind of a recapture rate as we call it. Wealth is rising as well. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, as we get older, we tend to have more in savings, more in equity. But also means there's more spending power. This is good news in terms of trying to develop commercial enterprises in the area. You know of Kaiser as a bedroom community. These numbers surprised us and our economists that we have .4 jobs per house. Again, there's just a number. And we know that people don't, two worker households, we don't live in the same place that both of our people in the house work. But we also know as planners, when we look at numbers, a linkage, a similar area, like one job per house, those kind of cities have less travel needs, shorter travel needs. The job near you might be your dry cleaner or your accountant, but that meant you made a short trip to go visit them. So these are, a lot of cities aim for a goal of about one to one. It's also important to know because commercial enterprises, offices especially, they're our biggest tax-based generators in terms of funding public services. So you know, in retail states, you know, sales tax states, retail is really good. But in Oregon, manufacturing, offices, things like that, help keep city coffers running strong. We had our economics consultant help us put all this stuff together and we're just these few slides from them, so I'm going quick. But in general, he's describing the market here as soft but getting stronger in terms of, he says, you know, there's pretty good demand for new rental housing, but it's at the two, maybe three story level. So they're not getting, you know, it's all surface parking lots, so they're not getting anything of real subsistence size, substantial size, excuse me. And it's a great location for retail, but the demand is a little soft. And it's surprising, I think it's because there's so much retail nearby, the people are making a short drive and going to Fred Meyer's or other things like that to buy their goods. And then again, office is a soft market right now. It's not, office developers aren't spending a lot on land here, so there's not that many opportunities. So we tend to be getting one, two, and maybe three story office buildings that he thinks are feasible in the next, you know, five, 10, 15 years. So this is kind of a recap here, some images of the kind of things he was talking about with us, low and mid-rise being popular, wood construction, it's just playing more cost effective than going much taller. There is, especially within the code, and you'll see later, there's opportunities for building more intensity. The trick right now is the economics. To build a taller building, each square foot you build gets a little bit more expensive. So you have to get a little higher monthly rent out of your tenants or your leaseholders if they're stores to make that project pencil out. So that's where he's saying, we need to be looking at how we can get that on the increase to make some of these projects pencil. So we are, that's a little bit of the background that we shared with the public and our advisory committee as we ramped up this project. So now I'm going to walk into what's in the memo that you have in front of you. We did what we like to call scenario planning. I say we like to call, people call it scenario planning. I just wanted to let you know what this is. This is, we developed a few crash test dummies, a few versions of the future. We're not wedded to any one of them. We're finding out what are the forces at work, what is the market, what are the regulations likely to produce? What are the potential things that could happen if we made some changes to any of those? Regulatory policies, market conditions, et cetera. And so we have a few of these scenarios. I want to point out though, that like Nate said, these are not alternatives. When you build a bridge, you might have an alternatives analysis. You have two designs, you compare them for cost and how well they move traffic and you pick one. Scenarios are really about just testing, what are the outcomes of these policies? What are the outcomes of making a change? What could it do? So that's what we have here in front of you now. We developed three scenarios. The first one is a baseline. And for those of you that were involved in the Transportation System Plan, you remember there was a growth forecast? It said roughly 700 new homes would be built within this corridor area during that planning horizon. So our first scenario is, hey, let's locate those digital homes, in this case, onto the ground, based on market conditions, based on the zoning that we have in place. The second scenario, and I'll get into the numbers a little bit here, was based on what we called, looking at some increased efficiency, changing some of the regulations to shrink some setbacks, to change some parking ratios, things that would allow people to use the land a little bit more, get more use out of their land. And this is an important thing when you look at your comprehensive plan and you're working with the state DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development. This is one of the first questions they ask you when you're looking at your housing needs is, well, have you been looking at efficiency measures? How well are your zones performing? So this is, we were testing the kind of things that would likely get tested in a comp plan. And then the third scenario is looking at, and the word upzoning isn't really necessarily the right thing, but looking at places where there are opportunities for, let's say, some industrial properties might be good locations for commercial, some residential places that might be good locations for mixed use, and seeing if there's some opportunities out there that we could find to see what these different scenarios would produce. So I'm going to walk through them, just kind of, you know, one after the other real quick. So as I mentioned, based on that economic analysis, the baseline scenario is pretty much one, two-story buildings, occasional three-story building. It matches that forecast for development within the TSP. It's about, in this case, we have almost 900 new households, obviously some moving around, and then a little over 1,000 jobs. Because these buildings are lower rise, they're not real big, they use maybe a third of the land, a fourth of the land, or sometimes almost a half, but they don't use a lot of each parcel. It's used for parking, it's used for a small building. So in a way, there's capacity on that land that that landowner has, but she or he isn't able to realize it for one reason or another, whether it's the market right now, or maybe there's some caps on density or parking numbers that are keeping them from using all of the property. You might ask yourself, well, why don't they just build a garage? And that's because it's very expensive. Parking garages come in when you get some pretty aggressive rent levels, when people can justify building parking structures. In a community of this size and scale, you're more likely to get public parking rather than individual garages. So that way, you can free up land on other sites, but it's hard to get private sector folks to build parking in structures. As I mentioned a little bit about the market, it's what we call achievable rents that drive a lot of this. And without getting, you know, too into the weeds, we used tools that developers use, it's called a development pro forma, where we analyze what can I get in rent compared to what it costs me to build and how much I can build, just kind of simple. And our economist is telling us right now, we have an average rent of about $1.20 per square foot for a residential apartment building. Newer apartments are going for significantly more. If you go on Craigslist and look, you'll see that, but he looked at the average. And so we are assuming that we'd get a little better in some places. And this is where he says, the market's soft and rising. You're getting a lot of demand, some from folks wanting to be here and working here, others from folks that are working in Wilsonville, working in Beaverton, working in Salem, they're looking for a different affordability point, so that the demand is rising. The second scenario then, we looked at those what we called efficiency measures. These are things, as I mentioned, to shrinking some setbacks. So for example, a rear yard setback of, say, 10 feet, 20 feet, I forget what it was, that's 10. 20. A 20-foot rear yard setback, if you were to build, let's say, a town home, which is usually three stories tall, you'd have to be 20 feet from the backyard. And typically, townhomes aren't about making a yard, they're more about a small patio kind of space. You end up with what land is left, shrinking it, so it's hard to build those. So changing those, allowing people to use more of the land, especially those backyards, allows more things to happen. So that's one example. We also looked at changing some parking ratios and things to make mixed use buildings work. And one of the benefits there is you can get shared parking. So you don't have to have parking for every resident, parking for every shopper, because residents aren't there when the shoppers are there, so you can, they can share some, so things like that. And this moves us, you know, in many ways closer to a lot of the goals that were reestablished through our public engagement meetings. It's a pretty good jump, it's almost, you know, 900 more housing units. And in this case, just a couple more hundred jobs. As we added mixed use buildings, and we don't have that many jobs because the jobs are just that ground floor, and we started bringing in more residential. And we would have, we wanted to get a little bit more office, but our economics consultant was telling us that it's soft right now, the rates we can get were hard to make some of the projects work out. So I'm going to give you a little bit of example of how those efficiency measures were applied. So I hope these aren't too esoteric. But in this case, I looked at an apartment building. I said, okay, under the code, I can build a two-story apartment building with 1.75 spaces per unit. I use about a 38 percent of my lot. That's what the, by the time I put in my landscaping requirements and density requirement standards, even using today's 150 high rents, I get 11 units. So it's about 22 units per acre, which gets us close to the maximum bar code. I can use that same half acre site, and if I shrink the parking to one space per unit, which you can only do if you have transit and you're near other things. So these are the kind of tough decisions we have to make, but this is just a what-if. Shrink down the parking requirements, I can get up to half the lot, that red area up there is where the building is. So half of that pie chart now is used for building space, so that owner is able to use her, his property better. And I doubled the number of units, just by allowing one more store and less parking. So much more efficient. And in this case, I'm assuming there's a magic wand and it's a really nice building and I can charge a little bit more rent. If I wasn't charging more rent, the profit level would be about the same. In general, developers want to see about 12 percent profit, but they'll go to 10 in the right situations. So that's one example of how that could work. Here's a three-story building, looked at in a couple different ways. In this case, we made a mixed use building. And so while standard might be more of, you know, 1.4 spaces per unit, which is a little low, but we may have shared uses, and three spaces per 1,000 square feet of retail. So that's kind of a standard urban mall, would be more like five spaces per 1,000. And again, we get our 11 units on the site, but this time, we also got a floor of jobs. If we knocked that to one parking space per unit and two spaces per 1,000 feet of retail, so we've taken a third of the parking away, it's tight, but they're sharing, then we can use three quarters of the lot, almost 71 percent of that lot. So that becomes a very different feel. Not only to get numbers out of this, you get revenue, you get units, but you get a walking condition, where you're on the sidewalk and you have something to look at and see the whole spot, rather than seeing a parking lot for most of the block you walk along. So, and in this case, we well exceeded though, the allowed density in the city. This is up at 47 units, which is close to 100 per acre, so 90 something per acre. One more example, and then I'll be all done with the flip charts. One more example is, one of the common products that we're seeing hot on the markets in other parts of the state are what we call small lot, single-family homes. These satisfy people's desire to have a standalone home with their own space, not a shared wall. So the lots tend to get smaller, say like 40 by 80 is kind of an example of the kind of things, 40 feet by 80 feet, the folks will do for that. In this case, when we plugged in the setback requirements, it simply takes half the lot away, which if you see my number in red, it means I can only build two-thirds of a unit on this site. So in this case, by changing your lot size and changing your setback, allowing these smaller lots, you can do a nice ownership product that's a decent modest price point and is very desirable. So I think it pretty well fits with some of the, with the character, using up some of the remaining land for these kind of things. So a real quick recap of some of the things that I was just illustrating with those charts are minimum lot sizes can be reduced to allow more types of product, changing the housing density, letting, if someone can build a better, a higher density product, why not let them if it's got other right features? If it sits on the street well, if it's designed, if it's got, you know, can take care of its parking as required, et cetera. And this is tough, but landscaping sounds great, but oftentimes, it's just, it can be at the expense of buildable space. And it might even be too small to really be used, but it's just there. And sometimes, being more careful about landscaping allows us to better utilize some parcels. And that is related to the setback limit that I mentioned before. So the third scenario then goes a little beyond. So we've taken now the efficiency measure scenario, and now we've added a little bit to it. And we looked for other opportunities, and I'll show you a couple of examples of these next, but looked at other opportunities, say, all right, we get closer to some of our goals about an active place, a place with more travel choices, with more stores, more restaurants, by bringing in a larger mix of uses and bringing in some more activity. One of the things that's tricky about this one is, you know, we recognize that to build these, especially if you want to get like a five-story building, five-story mixed building, you need higher rents. I think I tested one of these out, needed to get about $1.90 a square foot to get it there. And that's getting pretty expensive, pretty expensive. It's, yeah, I think we're, like I said, 150 is a common new rate right now, so it's getting up there. So I'll show you some examples here, but this really, this got about 2,500 new households and 2,100 new jobs. So this is, and those are, and you notice, it's a pretty close tied ratio. That's kind of close to that one to one, even though it's just the increment, but it's closer to that, you know, bringing in jobs as we're bringing in housing. And the, here's some, here's some examples then. So this is a snapshot, little picture of some single-family zoning that's right off of, you know, real close to River Road, and there's some really large lots. Is this the kind of place with those efficiency measures where a couple of owners might say, hey, let's combine our properties? We can do eight units instead of the two or three that are here now. We can either live in one of them, or we can sell and move somewhere else. But that brings a lot more people close to transit, closer to River Road, and more people to eat in the restaurants and all of that. So it's really utilizing a pattern that might have been a little extra large in the beginning. This is a really tough one, looking at the mobile home park up north by Lock Haven. This is affordable housing, and this is important to a lot of people. We see this all over the state. These are the kind of things that a lot of times developers are picking up and converting into other uses. So these are, we need to know from you guys as we look at putting together potential tools, if this is the kind of thing that should be off the table, or if there's other desires you have. So the mayor's saying like that, I got a signal there. All right, all right. So, you know, Portland right now actually just made a special zone to protect mobile home parks because they were having that displacement. But there are other cities that have measures where they get redeveloped, but developers are required to, for example, take a certain, spend a certain amount of money for each resident for relocations and things like that. But it's never, never without conflict. Here's a couple other examples where we have like some, some single-family homes, the brown up there, actually it's just single-family homes, but they're already zoned for apartments. So these are the kind of things that, yeah, some clever owners might see potential in that, especially if the house is a little bit older and hasn't been kept, maybe it's a, the roof is leaking, or you know, that might be a situation. So this is, we identified some of these type of opportunities where people can take advantage of the zoning they have today to do something a little bit more intensive on their property. And especially when you get more than one together, you could do some like a cottage neighborhood, some of the, what we call the missing middle, some of the things that aren't produced that often right now, but are kind of getting a new resurgence. They're not a single-family home, they're on apartment, they're somewhere in between, so. And then another, another one, and this can also be pretty darn controversial, you want to hear about, this is just one example where all that area labeled IBP is industrial business park. It's colored pink on my map because I tested it out, what if that was a mixed use zone? And this is another kind of thing that we see, those places with good working routes often make fun of adaptive reuses, where gas stations become salons and factories become brew pubs and things of that nature. So you see this all over, whether it's, you know, Portland's Inner East Side or Dallas' Dallas, Texas has a deep LM neighborhood, or Austin, Texas, and all over the country, College in Denver, these kind of things happen. It's, again, trading off the jobs that are there might be something you don't want to see. I mean, it's obviously the government doesn't move them away. The owners would choose to develop in that pattern if they wanted to, if you provided them the option. Right now, they don't have that option. So to keep the status quo, keep it as an important job area, you would not want to see this kind of rezoning allowed. But if you see those kind of districts having some potential, that might be something that we would, we could look at. So again, we're kind of curious to get your thoughts and input. So I'm going to hit some charts real quickly. These are simplified versions of what's in the document. But basically, each scenario looked at ways to get a little bit more development, a little bit more intensity, a little greater mix of use. I just put this up here as multifamily and single-family, just for ease of reading, with multifamily being orange. One of the reasons I wanted to show this is, there's not much vacant land, and there's, even though the city is mostly zoned single-family, this corridor is not. So the development potential in this corridor is largely through redevelopment and largely on land that is either zoned for multifamily residential or for mixed use. So that's why you see such a large amount of orange on these charts. That might look a little off-putting at first, because it's a lot different than we are today. I then made a chart where I added all that new growth to what's on the ground today. And now you can see that the city remains vast majority, two-thirds but roughly, single-family, even in these other scenarios. But the new development will look a lot different. And that's important because, you know, it's, there's, what we see in our street, walking around the dog or something like that, but then there's, when we go to town and things look different, sometimes that's, sometimes it's great, sometimes it's shocking. So it's just to be aware of it. We also just looked at, you know, the job mix. And I think, you know, we have, I think we did a pretty good job in these scenarios. You don't want to over-retail any area, you want to have enough to support local folks in an urban environment, you know, your corridor. But really, office, as I mentioned, is your more desired overall, because of the benefits for giving places people to work in town and tax-based potential. And so then, this slide is a comparison of just jobs to housing. As I mentioned, if these bars are, you know, one to one, that's kind of what cities consider in a good range, if they were even. In each, in the, one thing we noticed, as we started developing more intensely and going taller, those upper stories tended to be residential. So you can see that reflected in these charts. The, again, I just want to just put it in light of where we are today. So I added all that new growth to the existing growth, and you can see, we still don't get above, you know, a .5 ratio at any case in terms of our jobs-housing balance. So a few slides on, as we talked about in the beginning, and I just wanted to refresh, we checked in with folks on adopted goals from several projects. We had people rank priorities and goals, so we could kind of, you know, recapture, make sure we were on the right page as we started doing our research. I don't want to read, 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 because I try not to do that too much, but as you can see, there are living wage jobs, range of goods and services, a support for existing businesses, a variety of housing, range of incomes, and gathering spaces was pretty popular there as well too, which is important for any urban and urbanizing environment. And then a couple other ones, people, you know, thoughtful growth and redevelopment. This is so tricky in a lot of cities like this, is you, you want growth and prosperity, but you want to retain who you are and who we are and what we're going forward. And one of our committee members said, I like this, but I think we have to be less Kaiser to be this, and a couple of examples we showed him. So that's, that's something to really, you know, this is, this is home, so you've got to think about these kind of things. So just, you know, attractive, same with the open space, attractive, distinct identity, these kind of things came up, and proximity and things. There were priorities for transportation, of course, walking, biking, well-maintained streets, and transit focus to these development areas. So we are assuming that part of what may So we are assuming that part of what makes like scenario three possible, for example, is more transportation choices in the vicinities of those centers. And then, you know, just to kind of recap these scenarios, as I mentioned, each one of them is developed within some certain consistencies of what our goals have told us. We're bringing in, you know, more, more multifamily jobs, multifamily housing in all, in all of these, which helps with the housing profile, even though it might look a little different. We're bringing in more office jobs in these scenarios and not just trying to spread the retail, which doesn't do it as much for us. We could go farther in those directions, further, farther, anyway. We could do, we could do a little bit more. And as I mentioned, the jobs-housing balance, this is, you know, committee members said, we're a bedroom community. We are, but those, you know, pretty low, low numbers. It does mean you have to drive more and go to other, other cities for, for things, which also means you're spending money into someone else's community, when, you know, the, the share of retail spending that happens from Kaiser is surprisingly low staying in Kaiser. So that's kind of important. And then I think that living wage jobs, again, with office and industrial is helpful. So that's kind of recap of how these different scenarios, different tests play out in terms of your adopted values. And then Kate, now, I'm going to push the computer. Why don't you take this microphone, you think it's better?
Thank you.
So Kate's going to talk about, more on that regulatory impediment side, and then the kind of options that we might have. And this is where we want to, this is really a sounding board. Are these, some of the things we're identifying, things you'd support, things we should go back and work on? Or like the one I mentioned where I got the, this, are they no starters? So with that, Kate?
Thank you. All right. So we talk about impediments or barriers to, and we're talking about implementation, we're talking about implementing the goals and the visions and the objectives that we've identified through this process for this corridor. So those are the, the thriving mix of uses, range of housing types, support for small businesses, living wage jobs. So what are the, what are the things that may be sort of getting in the way of achieving that vision for Kaiser? So Glenn already kind of touched on some of these. He talked about potential market, market barriers, so things like rent levels and just the existing real estate market in Kaiser might be a barrier. And then he also talked a lot about these regulatory barriers or constraints on sites imposed by the development code that might limit sites from achieving their sort of full development capacity. And that, that latter piece is what we're really going to focus on, or what I'm going to focus on with the rest of this presentation, and kind of get into some of those impediments and solutions. So, moving forward, so the, the sort of key impediments, so we included a lot of research and, and findings in this memo that we, we handed you, so I would encourage you to read that to get all, sort of the full details, but we're just going to kind of pull out some key highlights from that tonight. So the key impediments we're going to talk about.
And I should have mentioned this during my presentation, but we have reams of background data. So I have all those development performance sheets that we built to test out those buildings. We have reams of data, we can go farther. So if that's something that you want to either ask for us to bring next time, or relate to Nate, that, hey, we'd like to see more research on this front or that front, let us know, we can bring, bring that forward.
Okay. So geographic constraints of zoning, permitted uses, standards to promote compact, efficient development, and also standards to promote attractive, we're calling people-oriented or sort of pedestrian-oriented development. So that's what we'll get into here. So if you look at the existing zoning along the corridor, it's a little hard to see on this slide, but the areas of red, that's commercial mixed-use zoning, so that's one of the mixed-use zones. And that kind of dominates the, the areas right along the corridor there. And the pinks are also commercial or mixed-use, the purples are mixed-use, and then the yellows are various residential zones. So if you look at where that actual commercial and mixed-use zoning is, in some places, it only goes one or two parcels beyond River Road itself. So this is a pretty big constraint, and it creates a number of impediments. So it limits the overall number of sites that could be potentially redeveloped by just like, just putting that constraint there. So if it's single-family zoning, you can't redevelop that as a mixed-use development. It also limits the opportunities for development on multiple sites, or sort of consolidation of lots, which might be necessary to get the sort of larger-scale developments that would actually financially pencil out or, or work out to make a profit. It also creates this greater need for buffering or compatibility standards between, you've got the single-family zoning right adjacent to this commercial zoning, there need, there's typically standards to make sure that, you know, there's, there's some space, there's some landscape buffering, and that all takes up space that is not devoted to either the building or the development itself. So just another thing that's kind of gets in the way of this sort of compact development that we're looking for. Permitted uses, so in terms of fostering the mixed-use development and housing variety, oh, thanks Glenn, and the housing variety that's desired for the area. So looking at mixed-use development, so it's not, or it's, it is permitted in a lot of the mixed-use zones. We have a, the MU, which is the mixed-use zone, we also have the commercial mixed-use zone, we also have a commercial office zone, we have all these different zones that allow a mix of uses, but they don't necessarily require it, except in a very small portion of the mixed-use zone on Cherry Avenue. So that might be something that needs some, a little bit of extra incentive to achieve the desired balance of uses in a mixed-use area. In terms of housing variety, so the single-family residential zone, there are some impediments here. So it makes it difficult to develop this missing-middle housing that Glenn referred to earlier. So these are things like duplexes, townhomes, cottage cluster development, other sort of smaller scale but multi-unit development that is compatible with a resident, a single-family residential area, but it allows a little bit more higher density, you know, affordability with smaller units and things like that. So these housing types could add a lot of nice flexibility, sort of transition between the single-family and the, you know, sort of commercial and multifamily corridor. But it's, they're really pretty challenging to do in the residential, single-family zone currently due to development, or, excuse me, density standards, and, sorry, the approval process. Looking at my notes here. Okay. And then looking at development standards, so those are things like setbacks, height standards, landscape, minimum landscape requirements. So overall, you know, we were looking at the goals, and we kind of decided to assess these based on two criteria, two general, very generalized criteria. One is, do standards support compact, efficient development? So that, do they allow development to happen that's sort of maximizing the, the sites? But then also, do they foster this attractive, people-oriented development, which is a little bit more qualitative, it's a little harder to assess numerically, it's pretty hard to assess in that way, but it's kind of like, how does a place feel? Is it vibrant? Is it active? Is it lively? Are there places to stop and places to gather and lots of shops to go into? And those are a little more difficult to model in the sort of scenario planning that Glenn talked through, but I think they're really important in creating a commercial corridor and, and central places that people want to be, and that bring more people to want to live in the area and make it a really great place. So looking at development standards, some impediments to this more numeric sort of compact, efficient development, and Glenn already talked about these, but just wanted to reiterate because they're pretty important. Minimum lot sizes are too large to allow the sort of compact, single-family development that might be appropriate. Housing density is probably too low, maximum housing density is too low and constrains multifamily development. Minimum landscaping requirements are too high, and conversely, lot coverage maximums are too low, and those limit compact development. And then minimum setbacks may be too high to achieve this compact development. And then switching over and looking at the sort of attractive, people-oriented or pedestrian-oriented development. So a big part of achieving these project goals is, again, creating this kind of place that people, people want to be. So that's sort of human-scale development, it's safe, it's comfortable for pedestrians to walk around, encourages people to get out of their cars, visit multiple places with one trip, and creating a lot of activity at the sidewalk. And there's sort of a standard package of regulatory tools that, that we use as planners to achieve this kind of place. And, you know, there are certain things that you, you can't force that kind of happen organically, but there are some things that you can do regulatorily. You can bring buildings closer up to the sidewalk through setbacks, you can limit parking between a building and the street, you can require ground floor windows to create the sort of transparency and activity.
If you look at the, the Jersey Mike's building, for example, has a wider sidewalk, it has a lot of windows, it has some of these kind of amenities and outdoor aesthetics that we're talking about, with one exception that they covered the windows. But you get the, that architecture matches the kind of standards that Kate's talking about for a one-story. There's no parking between it and the street, it's got outdoor seating.
And Kaiser has actually done some great work and implemented some of these standards already, so just definitely want to point that out. Some of them are the, sort of limited to a small geographic area, others, maybe they could be sort of amped up a little bit or expanded into different zones. So those are some things we might want to consider going forward. And then there are also some standards that, that aren't in the development code right now that could potentially be added, that would complement those other standards. So this one's pretty important, requiring buildings to be oriented to the street and building entrances to be oriented to the sidewalk. So again, that creates that sort of direct connection between buildings and public spaces. And even where there is a maximum setback, allowing the potential for gathering places or public plazas, so that even if you have, you know, sort of more urban-style development, you allow these spaces where people could have a little outdoor seating, or, you know, have some benches and potted plants and things like, places where people can stop and, and meet. And then another one is active ground floor uses, so things like retail, restaurants, cafes, these can help kind of create the activity and vibrancy at the sidewalk. So some places require those to be sited on the ground floor. Okay. So those are the sort of key impediments. And looking at potential amendments to the development code, we would want to address those key impediments. So how do we update the development standards to achieve compact, efficient development through addressing these, you know, setbacks, front and rear setbacks, landscape requirements, lot coverage, parking, residential density? So these are the kind of things that we would likely target, or recommend you target in a development code amendment. And then again, standards for these, this attractive, people-oriented development. So I won't go through these again, because I just talked about these, but just reiterating that, these are the things we probably want to look at. And we have this concept that's kind of been developed over the years for centers along River Road. So the idea of focusing sort of the most dense development, the most activity, the most sort of retail in these key intersections at Lock Haven and River Road, Shamawa and River, and then where Cherry Avenue and River Road come together. These are kind of like the, the places where it makes sense to sort of target some of these standards. So this could mean sort of boosting the efficiency measures to achieve more compact development in the centers. It could potentially also mean requiring stricter design standards to achieve that sort of more attractive style of development. Yeah?
And that's where we really want to get the feeling from you is, you know, where should we go with our next phase of coming up with, with tools for you to look at? You know, some of, when, when, when Kate says, you know, stricter design standards, she hit on a few that are aesthetics. You already have standards, people have to build to the certain standards on your property. But you can add different types of standards to those to guarantee an aesthetic. You can also have some more performance-related standards, like if I look at a site, I'm pretty sure that I, I can have a, one of those mixed-use buildings that I tested can make money. But I know probably for a smaller investment, I can make the same return and be out faster with the connects, not a par store, that has parking in the front, that takes up a quarter of the parcel, some basic landscaping. I don't live here, I come in, get a permit, and I'm out of here. So sometimes you want to put these, some performance standards on your zoning, on your design standards, to get more of what you want to see for performance look and feel.
Thank you. So just kind of want to high-level look at potential approaches to achieving these code amendment standards. There's a number of different ways you could go about it, and really, any of these approaches could be used to achieve similar outcomes, some are better than other, or some may work better in Kaiser than others. But we're going to talk about each one of these pretty, pretty briefly. So one would be pretty straightforward, modifying the existing zones. So working with what we've got on the ground and just making tweaks here and there to allow, you know, to reduce setbacks maybe, to reduce landscape requirements, maybe to add, you know, building articulation standards or building orientation standards. And then again, potentially targeting some of the key requirements to the centers along the corridor. Another approach is a new overlay zone. So this would likely be a new chapter of the Kaiser Development Code. This would be applied over the existing base zones, and it would basically apply either new or additional or potentially stricter standards, or possibly more flexible standards, depending on which way we want to go with it. And it could also be potentially tiered in some way to apply special standards for centers. So it could be kind of one level in the centers, and then a sort of broader level for the rest of the corridor, or something along those lines. And then the other option, and these could be sort of combined in different ways, too, is, is rezoning. So you could either apply some of the existing zones that are already out there, that have already been developed, like the mixed-use zone, which is a sort of more recent addition to, to the zoning map. You could apply that to more properties, you could expand it to include some of the more, the existing multifamily residential zones potentially. You could also develop a whole new zone, and just go whole hog and just really go for it. So that's another option. Again, though, likely focus on centers, and maybe also looking at those places where the single-family sites are right adjacent to the commercial areas, those might be sort of some key areas to focus on. So again, just these three possible approaches, we talked a little bit more in-depth in, in the memo, but we're kind of going to be evaluating these, these approaches based on the direction we hear from you all. We also want to look at how, you know, how user-friendly are they for applicants? Are they, do they make sense? Are they easy to follow? How easy are they to implement by staff? That's going to be pretty important. It'll save the city money if they don't have to spend as much time creating the code and making it happen. Political feasibility is obviously going to be a key, key factor, community acceptance. Something like rezoning of single-family development, single-family housing is going to be pretty controversial. So something to keep in mind. Yeah, I'm going to hand it back to Glenn now, I think.
Thank you, Kate. I'll, I'll give you this so you can interrupt me. So again, you know, we're about, almost the presentation, so, but we hopefully can have a good discussion about this. I wanted to just, you know, mention, so there's, Kate talked about, there's, you know, the regulatory side of things. There's also programs and, and investments that, that can, that can be made. Obviously, regulatory, regulatory changes are probably less costly. Programs can run the range of, you know, staffing, hiring economic development staff. Some cities will have urban designers, either, either, and architects, either on contract or as staff, because the more you get into reviewing design standards and guidelines, the more you need a professional that can then digest that and help bring, and help respond to those applicants, here's why we want this to be different, or that, or, and how to bring it to the commission, bring it to the council for, for their review. So that's, you know, just a couple of examples. So you've seen some examples with roads and streetscape improvements, when you use the urban renewal to make some sidewalks and some other changes. There are other types of, and additional types of things, you know, the public art, the plazas. Public buildings like this one are great examples of a place where you, you put your money where your mouth is, you build something that's beautiful and great, and then it shows folks around it that you mean business and that you're staying in this location. And it kind of helps prove some of the, the market potential. Public housing, a lot of cities will either develop outright or partner. And we also, I think, should add to the category here, catalytic projects, where you might partner with a developer to help prove the market to other developers. They are pretty risk averse despite how much risk they take, and so sometimes they need to see something work before they'll do it. I just lost my voice. Excuse me. Yeah, wait on a second, thanks. I can, anyway. So there's a few examples, though, of these, of these investments, and when we get into the implementation program, we want to look at this, you know, kind of a tiered standpoint. What are the things that we need to do right off the bat? Are they code changes? Are they hiring an architect? Are they building something? Some things we put into the hopper when it's time. These are what we call do-when projects. So every so many years, and we just started another one, we do the housing needs analysis. Every so many years, we do the transportation system plan. So when you're doing these programs, periodically grant projects, for example, those are do-when's. With those development partnerships can be what I call the do-if category. With those development partnerships can be what I call the do-if category. If the wind is blowing right, if the right person is looking at their property or comes in and says, Nate, you know, I was approached by this developer. What should I do? Maybe those are places for partnerships where you can help prove it out to others. Okay, and I have just one more slide, and then we can just have a discussion. The things we're doing next, we, with input from the advisory committee and from our discussions tonight, we're revising this memo. And after that, then we can jump into developing this implementation program. And this can touch a range of things from comprehensive plan and zoning, as Kate described, to investments and programs. Also, dear to everyone's heart, transportation operations. So we have Kittleson Associates onboard to help us make that all work well. We'll then go back to our advisory committee, then go to a public event, and then come back to this group. So we have this set of working sessions before we can even get into discussion about an actual adoption process. That's just helping to vet and to work things through. Then after our meeting with you, then we'll start working on that actual formal development and adoption package that then will go through typical process with hearings and whatnot. So thank you for the water. So with that, we're here for a discussion. Yes?
The nexus between the types of jobs and the housing. We have, when you're looking at the types of jobs you were talking about, office jobs may be able to get close to the target for being able to afford the types of housing. We're talking the multi-use. But by and large, retail doesn't stand a snowball's chance of being able to afford $1,200, $1,300 a month. So you're talking about creating spaces where people can work, but they can't move upstairs. So we're pushing people, we're continuing the push between people's job location and work location. So I know the office is soft, but if it is a desirable place for an office worker or people in those industries to work and live, and we're seeing that happen more and more as people decide that commuting is just not a fun way to live and telecommuting is becoming more of an option in certain industries, targeting the opportunities for people to have a different lifestyle in a smaller community that is has great schools, great community spirit. We become a very attractive place for people trying to get out of the 20 and 30-story foot modelists that have been created in other places. So creating that sense of space, but also the nexus between the types of jobs and the housing that people can actually afford to live in. And so it'll set up all the other space. When I went like this, a huge thing is to protect affordable housing. If we have affordable housing, I don't want anybody who lives currently in affordable housing to feel that this process is even going to remotely threaten where they are right now. And that's a hugely important message that I think needs to be there. If a developer comes along later and it's something that can retain the affordable nature of that housing, that's okay conversation to have. But people are very afraid right now when you start talking about redevelopment because they've been tutored out, saying, good luck, go find something else. I'm going to remodel this entire facility. So we've got to protect our affordable housing.
Thank you. I made a note here. I hadn't thought about this the way you said it. I liked it. I'm kind of hearing on the office side, you're basically by supporting office development, you're creating the customers that allow us to get those other housing types built for them. I like that. Voices, hands up.
Just to throw out one thing as we were, you know, during your part of the presentation. You know, the one of rural housing area, the question is, you know, maybe that the, something that shall not be named. But I go back to a really quality project that, I don't know, I'm sure of the fast change in income levels. But the, the, for Mobile, Parker, whatever, Wilsonville, that became completely, very landing or something along those lines. Sort of, but it was, it was single-family, but also a lot of multifamily. That was then, in my opinion, extremely tough. So, you know, the potential there for taking that could, it could, especially in the connectivity of things like that.
Yeah.
But I also hear the sensitivities that are.
Yeah, and I don't know the backstory or any history on that site. I just, I could, I knew it would be there. I meant where it's located, it's so visible. And it's one of the few large parcels that's got zoning. We see that, you know, community after community, there's always one or two of those.
Just a little page changing. Jobs are mentioned throughout this report, sixty pages, all three scenarios. How do you define job? Are we talking about family-wage competitive? Are we talking about two or part-time jobs, $100 an hour at twenty hours a week?
Yeah, so the question, for those who couldn't hear, was how do we define jobs in our analysis? We broke jobs into industrial, retail, and office, just those three basic categories. We didn't get into contractors, people who don't work on site. And it's a function simply of the buildings. That a building, that's an industrial building, has an employee for X number of thousand feet. An office has an employee every 300 feet. You know, retail, 250 to 400 also. And we reported them out, and I didn't put it in, I did put it in the slide, but I reported it out, is those three categories. Yeah.
Can I press pause here? We're being televised, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we need a traveling mic. So can you guys share this one?
We can share, or I can repeat the question.
Well, they can't hear if you want to do that.
I can just repeat in this microphone because that one's hard to use.
It is. It's got the long cord. We have to be able to get it to people. My concern is that people who are watching can't hear.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so the gentleman asked how we defined employment in our scenarios and specifically asking about the quality of the jobs. Are they part-time jobs? Are they full-time jobs? What level? And what I was describing, the way we build these models is we build digital or artificial buildings. And we group these buildings together and locate them on the land based on the zoning. So that's to say that those jobs would fit in those buildings and they're broken down by retail, office, or industrial. And, you know, we matched, we stayed within the adopted forecast. We're not, you know, as planners, we don't determine which employer goes into a spot or what that, but that can be an important implementation measure we can look into. I'll give you an example. The city of Redmond, for example, they bought, so, pretty good industrial sites by the railroad. And they then changed the rates to businesses coming in. So the more family-wage jobs, the lower your monthly rent was for that property or if they sold it for sale price. So there are techniques we can do to try to get with planning to help some of those job measures. Question in the back.
Kaiser Nursery is closed. Right on the middle of big piece of property, kind of be pretty much vacant. What would you recommend Kaiser could do, property like that, to bring in wage offices or some kind of business there?
Okay, the, yeah, so there's an example question. There's a property, the Kaiser Nursery near River Road, that will be closing. And the question was, what could a city do with an opportunity like that? There's lots of options. Let me see, it hit a couple. Right now, you know, okay, obviously, it's a privately-owned parcel. One approach is a city, sometimes if it's in the right place, the right circumstance, they try to buy some parcels like that so that they have money in the game. They can then attract a developer, they can work out a deal to where they write down some costs for the developer or they even, some cities retain ownership and do leases, do ground leases to have a control. This can also be the kind of, if it's well situated, if it's the, if it's the right kind of project, you know, one of the things that we're going to be doing in some upcoming phases is do some, some small area design vignettes and some illustrations. And so something we're looking at is owners that would be interested or willing to let us draw pictures of their property and how it could be. So I'd say in the very first, you know, Nate, we should take a look at that site if there's a potential to do a vignette or drawing, an illustration for that site of how it could turn out. Sometimes that also can get the ideas flowing on the property owner's side. So there's a few things. Like I say, the more a city is invested in a property or a project, the more they can get out of it. But there's also ways that cities can help with infrastructure needs. And it's one of the things that Urban Renewal did, for example, when you do new sidewalks and art and plazas and things that could help make a project. They can get more leases to the, more lease rate to the offices that they rent to when people are looking out the window at a beautiful environment. And we, as the public, sometimes can do that part of it. We can do the transportation, we can locate transit stop, a bus pullout, things of that nature that might help. Or I mentioned, another example was sometimes municipal parking is a great way to let people harness more of the power of their site if we can develop a parking lot somewhere that can be shared by multiple users. So there's a few ideas and examples, but we definitely want to look into it. Thank you for bringing it up. Yes?
So scenario three, you suggested 2,400 additional households. But didn't specify how many potential job market to bring in. I would venture to say you're probably looking at one and a half workers per household. So it still doesn't mean the demand of jobs necessary for those households.
So the question related to scenario three specifically and looking at the number of jobs and the number of households and in, are there enough jobs being supplied there to provide one for every person? No, I doubt it. Yeah. Like I say, the one-to-one, one-to-one, 1.25, those are targets cities often go for, just, you know. But like I said, we don't necessarily always capture the jobs right next to the units per se. But we really, you know, this is, it's not a predictive model, it's an evaluative model. And let me, like, for example, if I'm the Forest Service, I'm looking at fuel loads on the ground and trees and the humidity and the winds. And I can use those things to have a dynamic model that as the fire goes, air comes, it does this, it does that. This is a snapshot where I'm drawing an image, basically. I'm drawing an image in the computer of a zoning map getting utilized. And then I'm saying, if we built like that, what would happen? So I can't drive any one of those, like force the employers to land, force the housing to go. But I feel some comfort in, especially the first scenario and a bit of the second one, some comfort in the fact it's pretty closely tied to market conditions and to the forecast. Scenario three, we're taking some leaps. I mean, you know, some of the affordable housing got redeveloped in this one. And so there's displacement involved, there's other costs. There's, there's a lot of things in there that's really, like I say, it's a test to find out, are the trade-offs worth it to do some of these things?
So one of the scenarios you discussed were three major areas where you look at possible rezoning of Lock Haven, Shamua, and Cherry. Those happen to be the three busiest intersections to go east and west if you only have one road coming north. If you've populated the being and people can't afford to live in the same housing, both businesses, that is being an absolute nightmare during the main transit areas. They're already really bad now. And you increase people, you know, coming to those places where you've been, also going home, leaving home. See that being sort of overloaded.
Yeah, let me see if I can restate that because it was multi-part. The question was specifically about if we looked at rezoning for the higher-intensity commercial nodes currently of Shamua, Lock Haven, and Cherry River coming together, those being already busy areas, what happens, basically, to the traffic pattern? Are people able to come and go? Are we forcing people to make longer commutes because they can't afford to be in those units, et cetera? Good questions. One of the things we will do is at our next level is when we find out the tools you like, we then have the transportation modeler run the model. And we'll find out where we are in terms of if we're breaking any links. If, what they do is they track the capacity of the roadways based on volume versus capacity. And they measure with their models, which are evaluative, they repeat themselves. They measure how people act at intersections, how long they're delayed, if they're turning right, left, that sort of thing. So we'll do that in this next phase. One of the things that I will say is the rezoning kind of things that Kate talked about, a lot of those don't theoretically change the capacity based on the zoning. It already, commercial zoning can already do a lot. It's just not happening. And so her description is there a little bit more of, what are the kind of things you might do in those areas to change the character? So one of the things you'll see is it up by Lock Haven where drive-throughs are not allowed, for example. Shamua, Shamua, yeah, drive-throughs are not allowed. That is a common tactic in trying to help create a walkable, safe sidewalk because drive-throughs, they often have quick turn-ins, people aren't looking, you know, like other things. And they break up the sidewalk. So that is a change to zoning within a node that doesn't affect height, doesn't affect the number of jobs that could be there, but it affects the type of environment you have. Same thing like with the design standards that Kate talked about, having businesses up close to the street instead of a parking lot between the building and the street. But we are, any planning you do in Oregon, when you look at zoning, you absolutely have to look at the comprehensive plan, look at the travel impacts, document all of that. So I will add one more thing to that in that sometimes as places intensify and become more walkable, the speed of travel goes down. And some of the people we talked to, our interviews, some retailers actually said, you know, if cars were slower, people could see my sign. They wouldn't be afraid to turn in. So it's a good and a bad. So someone trying to drive through might be frustrated when they don't make each light or when they spend two cycles of a light. But sometimes the business owners prefer that. The people who don't have a car might prefer it because they're walking. Okay, I got you first, then you. Let's go. Question?
I was agreeing with you.
Oh, yeah, agree, yeah. It, there's, it comes both ways. Do you have a question?
Well, two points. I'm just going to, I'm going to follow up with what Matt was talking about. Just transportation, just, I appreciate hearing you. Yeah, that's the one thing we've really been talking about for years now. And the secondary, sorry, I can never remember arterial, vascular.
Just an alternative route.
Yes, but one that's taking some of the additional, you know, taking some of the traffic off of River to create that secondary north-south route, if you will, in terms of that last. I'm hoping that that would really be, create the chance to be close to River Road. How are we going to, how is that, is that involved in that, in that, in that?
Okay, let me, so I can recite that. The, no, it was a comment slash question related to, following up on the traffic analysis and the function of the network, reminding us and the folks in the audience that there has been discussion about an alternative north-south route because of the understanding of current conditions causing some tension, basically, with some congestion. And then, as mentioned, we will be running the traffic model as part of our next step. And I think the important community decision for every community with prominent arterials is what is the, and this happens when your transportation system plan cycles, but what is the right level of congestion? What's the right level of free flow? You know, a mathematician, an engineer will tell you, well, if I get cars going 20 to 25 miles an hour, I can get more cars through per hour than if they're going faster. But a person who's late for an appointment says, I want to go faster. So there, you know, there's, there's that. And so that level of comfort varies by community. Obviously, if you're in South Bay, in Los Angeles, your level of discomfort would be a lot higher than it is here. There are tools that we can, so we will continue the conversation about what the alternative route options could be. And also, you know, there are other tools. ODOT has, Oregon Department of Transportation has a couple of programs. One of them is called a special transportation area where if a community says, you know, we're comfortable with a little bit, this level of congestion, maybe it's a little more. So we want you to let us design for lower speeds. Then ODOT can do that. They, you know, it's a group decision. Say, all right, this is a road that's, and I don't know if it's for non-ODOT facilities, I think it's mostly, but there's some options there we can, so there's several things we can look at.
But you can also, looking at, yeah. And also, looking at how folks, how they are utilizing, I mean, there's some definite improvements that I think we could make to access to property as well. One issue we've looked at over time is rejecting consistently to the median downward or just that more of that issue.
Okay, let me just, so, to recap, one of the items mentioned there were, there are some potentially obvious solutions out there for some of the conflicts on River Road related to driveway in-and-outs, discussions in the past about a median. I would mention, medians can be good and can be bad. It really is very context-specific. Sometimes it's aesthetic, sometimes it's to preserve flow, minimize turning, and you see that a lot in California where they do U-turns at the end of each median, you know, for those reasons. Another thing that we've seen pretty successful is shared drives. So you have rear access, especially if you can develop an alternative, close-in grid network, if you have other road accesses, you can have businesses drive to the front, parking in the rear that's accessed from the rear. So those are ways to minimize the conflict points on the arterial, especially, I think, if you're, you know, pushing a stroller down the street and there's cars are trying to turn in quickly because they're not going to get rented, well, if they're at an intersection, it's a lot more, you know where to stop, you're not just in the middle of the sidewalk, that kind of thing. So, you had another point, and then I think...
Sorry, this is a wonky thing, but I gotta raise it just because of my past planning experience. One thing that we have talked about is that rear access to property. How do we link up some of those properties so that you can have some of that? We've done that to some degree, but there's more important.
Okay. So the question statement is, we've talked in the past about shared access and rear access to buildings, and the question was, how do you make those linkages happen? The least conflict way is, takes the most time, and that is when people redevelop. At those points, you have them change their access points. So it's, when you're changing your use, when you're doing a new thing with the property, you design it for different circulation patterns.
Yeah, that is one thing that we mentioned, but to me, that was really the unnatural kind of bringing to that. The other thing, if I might, and I will shut up, I promise, but...
Come on up. Just stay close to it, it's kind of noisy. Oh.
Okay, I'm sorry to do this, but just thought this would be easier. The one notion that I wanted to just urge a little bit of caution on is the overlay zone notion. You know, that's, there are some good and bad things to consider with respect to that. I think the objective is good. How you do that, I think, is what needs to be carefully implemented. In Kaiser, we saw that four years, when, which really precluded development from occurring out next to the area that eventually became Kaiser Station. We had something that was known as the Shamoah Activity Center overlay, and frankly, you know, I know where that started, it was a great idea, it was just completely impractical. I think over the time, if I'm not mistaken, we must have had maybe two or three interested parties in that over, like, a course of 20 years. And then, you know, then we had somebody set forward with, hey, how about, why don't we try this? Which is, I would say, just cutting to the chase, that's eventually what became Kaiser Station. So, there's, there are good ways to do it, and there are bad ways to do it, and if we go down that road, that would be something to be, be real careful how we, how that gets designed.
That's a very good point, and I would say that, you know, a friend of mine's doing the zoning code for Los Angeles, and they have so many different types of historic neighborhoods, they've developed all kinds of overlays, and I think your point is really well-taken. I think of something like this where maybe those drive-through preclusions, for example, maybe that's what the overlay is. It's design overlay, not a use overlay. So separate the things out that are specific to that location. If you've got your transit centers there, if you have your bus pullouts, what might you do for a design standard in that location to take advantage of that? But thanks, good point.
Can you talk a little bit about how parking is focused based on cost, because you want to go out, what's the cost to have you look at, where you have retail on the bottom and parking your eyes above, or is there a space where you have parking on the bottom and maybe retail?
So, the question about parking, provision of parking being expensive, and asking about some of the other models for how parking is provided. First, when you see parking on the ground floor with, I'm sorry, retail on the ground floor with parking above, what you really have there is usually parking as a for-profit use, and the city's design standards require ground floor retail so that the street scape was nice. Otherwise, you'd be looking at just the fronts of grills and whatnot, or the rears of trunks, et cetera. So, when you do combine building into a project, really general rules of thumb, surface parking costs you $3,000 per space to make. When you start going into structured, you're at least 25. Some of the stuff in, like, the Pearl District was 45,000 per space, and bearing it is usually, yeah, 35. So it gets expensive. One of the, the first thing that we see people do to try to get more parking on less sites is what we call tuck-under parking. So you might have a surface lot in the back, and then, let's say you did residential, you might have garages, they could even be too deep, or you could have commercial, like you said, you could have, say, offices or apartments above, retail downstairs, and then a tuck-under level, even, it could even be a parking podium where the, you didn't build a parking garage, you just elevated your building with concrete podium, put some ground floor uses on it, and the rest of it's a parking lot. So it's kind of a hybrid in the cost, it gives you one more floor of parking. Some of the performers that I developed, they did assume some tuck-under parking as a way to get, that's how I was able to get 70% utilization on that one site, for example. And then, one other, it's getting, it's another product that we're seeing, like, in Portland suburbs, Beaverton just developed what some people call a Texas wrap. Tried to get them to call it a Beaverton Bengal, but it didn't work. Where, the parking is internal to the building, and then the residential units are on the outside. So everyone gets a window, everyone's got a single loaded corridor hallway, rather than a long linear but rig square building. So those are some other techniques that are penciling sometimes. Nate?
So, it was, you mentioned earlier, I think, Mark was going to coin a phrase, all about what we're talking about here is how much we want Kaiser not to be Kaiser. How do we, what's the temperament? So my question for you is, how would you advise the decision-makers in Kaiser to come to that? Where is the temperament for change? Where is the color for turning Kaiser into something different? Or is Kaiser, how would you advise?
So, really easy question. You know, how would we advise, there was a comment by one of the advisory committee members that I mentioned earlier, at what point does the change required to see some of these things make us not Kaiser? And how would you advise, what are the decisions you have to look at? There's, you know, some of the biggest ones, it's massive buildings, heights, scales, coverage, a lot of ordinances like we have now allow a height that would allow a four or five-story buildings, but we don't see them very much, very rare, just because of some of the conditions that Kate dug into. So, there is that basic question, you know, there was a reference to the 20, 30-story monoliths that clearly don't resonate. And so there's that, that question there is, what is the size parameters that we want to see? The other, there's a few real points here. The other is, how much of a person's property is our business? And when we talked about, you have to get your parking from the rear, you can't have a drive-through, those kind of things, it's affecting a person's range of things they get on the property. It may be more profitable, but if it's not what they want to do, are we willing to say, here's what you have to do? So those are tough, tough questions to ask. I would say, for example, if I was just a landowner on an arterial, I wouldn't want my right to drive-through go away. But if I knew nobody on my block was going to do them, and we could collectively do something better, then I'd be okay for it. You know, this is one of those kind of tricky things. And then, the third piece, I think maybe it's where you're going, the third piece is money. And some of the stuff is just more expensive. And when I was looking at the apartment performers, it was hard to get without going to a smaller unit size, it was hard to get below 1,300 a month. It's for, you know, 800, 900 square foot apartment. So, based on what it costs for us to build stuff, even if land is pretty cheap, what really gets us is the cost of construction. Now, some would say adding any housing is a benefit because it takes pressure off other housing that might be in a more affordable category. I tend to basically subscribe to that, but I worry a little bit in that, as I've mentioned, who's the new housing for? If you're trying to build a 1,500, $1,600 unit, you know, who's the market? Is it a Wilsonville resident who's wanting a little lower property taxes or something? Or is it someone who wanted to come home after they got through medical school? So.
I appreciate that question, but I'm going to flip it around. How do we do this as Kaiser? And I think that that's really the key to the thinking for the planning commission and the council in our community. Change is going to happen, but how do we do that as Kaiser, the Kaiser way of doing it? Finding to create that space, the community, the sense of community, and the opportunity for people to live and work and choose Kaiser. So, I'm going to reframe this a little bit into what we believe we can do now, thinking about our kids, our grandkids. What kind of community do they want to live in? Can they live in? Can they work in? And that as we frame the question that way, and it goes back to my first comment about, are we creating spaces where the jobs and the housing can be close enough together where they can get off the road and have time for community and have time for family? I grew up in Los Angeles, I know what that commute feels like, and it didn't build good family time. Okay, my dad and I got some great visiting in the car, but I think that the people of Kaiser aren't looking for that, they're looking for community. So, my question for you then, is as we're looking at these spaces, and I know it's just the River Road corridor, we're not talking about changing the character of our single-family neighborhoods, but you're going to have to have those public spaces and parks. So you could talk a little bit about that, or how you want to integrate that into this plan?
Specifically, the public spaces and parks, I think, but we, this has been identified as something that everyone has found important through the goals. And, you know, we had a few examples, and you have the public art program now, you've done a few, you know, pauses and things. There are also opportunities for open spaces, there aren't necessarily parks or public spaces, but are outdoor seating, or, I look at the, I look at the stream near the Ware Mart and Rite Aid, and I keep thinking that should be outdoor seating, beautiful place to be, and those are the kind of things that, it's not your property, it's that person's property, but the customer's experience, people driving by, people walking by experience that whenever you're intensifying, you're looking at more of a need to share open space in different ways, because the new homes have less personal space. And you go to, you know, European communities, parks have a lot different use, or it's not just ball fields and things like that, it's where people get out into the woods and get grass on their feet because they don't have the opportunity. So, it becomes more and more and more important, and the community has, you know, spoken for that with the recent measure to fund parks more, you know, that's a high priority. And I think there's a good point you made, too, that we aren't talking about changes to the single-family neighborhoods, which is the vast majority of the city. We're really looking at, you know, I think this is really how to increase prosperity and activities along River Road, and what are those trade-offs? I think one of the biggest questions is how much, I mean, most of the things we've talked about or looked at in these images are the kind of things people told us they want, that really traffic's the one thing people worried about, and cost. But the other side that we haven't talked about is, how proactive is the city's role? You can do a certain amount with regulation, and a lot of the stuff like Kate talked about, design standards, you know, we planners sometimes joke, you know, we can only regulate away the bad, but it's really hard to regulate in the great. We can regulate for good, maybe, but we can't regulate for the great. That comes through someone wanting to go above and beyond, to spend a little bit more, to have just a more thoughtful design, not, you know, buying a building plan that was used somewhere else, but doing something based on the context and where the sun comes up and where the wind blows. And so those things, you know, I mentioned the one development potential, you know, for example, where you share in a project, but those cost money. Those just have to cost money. Urban renewal is one tactic to get those, bonds, general funds, grant monies, but it's expensive. And, you know, other, like I said, you know, it also means probably, you know, larger staff levels. So some of that starts to conflict with some of the traditional elements of Kaiser, which are frugal, volunteer nature, you know, not having a big coffer and several bureaucrats running a bunch of things, where other cities will have, you know, staffs to doing some of these kind of enterprises. So I think that's a different, you know, question of how, this stuff's not cheap, and how much does the city want to ramp up and hire more people and have that expertise, you know?
So, we've talked a lot about the city, you know, development. Do you know, is the legislature working on some of these elements that are beyond financing the act code?
The question is, we talked about what local agencies can do, and are there any other things happening at the legislative level that can help with these barriers or other realms? I don't have anything at the top of my head. You know, we have historically used federal money sources for development projects, and that money is of varying availability depending on the administration. I'm not sure where things are at the moment with some of the, some of the community development funds that the federal government's put out. In terms of barriers, you know, typically, states don't get too into the details on that one. There was a recent ballot measure in California where they tried to basically over, you know, supersede local zoning to get more density around station areas, and it didn't pass. And that was very limited around a federal investment of transit, and that didn't pass. So, the exception in Oregon would be Metro. And so, in, at Metro, for example, you cannot build a large retail establishment where the city or the region has designated for industry, because we're preserving that road capacity for trucks. You can't require more than a certain amount of parking in transit areas. But doesn't, you know, and then some preservation measures, but doesn't, I don't have any real silver bullets on overcoming barriers.
One of the things that helps Kaiser to be Kaiser is that we have one high school. We have a couple of middle schools that feed into that one high school, and so, my kids all went to the same high school. And at what point does this growth, second high school, and that much identity of this?
So, the question, and this has come up before, the question is, as a city that, you know, McNary is the high school, the only high school, what does growth do to that identity of being a one high school town, a one high school city? And that's a great question, and, you know, it's really worth noting, you don't really need to grow. I mean, you have, the base case growth is pretty minimal, it's just kind of things moving along as they are. If you're trying to accelerate it, you need to take some actions. You have some land constraints, but Salem doesn't, they have a lot of space, you guys share an urban growth boundary, so there's potential there. Does not growing mean stagnation? Does it mean things get long in the tooth? That's hard to predict or answer, but I think, you know, some would say that a certain level of investment in growth is helping to keep things moving forward, and, you know, but that, that will come up, that will come up, and...
What point do we have?
Yeah. I'm trying to remember, it was, if there's the 10,000 households per school in the district or something they have right now for their ratios?
1,200.
1,200 kids or houses? Kids?
2,200 students.
2,200 students, okay, so that's going to be, that's going to be probably 7,500 households then in each, you know, something like that. So, yeah, you're pretty close. And, you know, one of the things that we heard through some of our stakeholder meetings is that if, if a lot of growth occurred and we had to ship, you know, let some kids attend at another school, it probably went in Salem, which would mean some of the kids in southeast Kaiser are probably the first ones who would go to a different school, and some concern, we heard, for the change in diversity. And some concern, we heard, for the change in diversity, the pulling diversity out of McNary from losing some of the students could be detrimental to both sides. One, the folks that had to move, and two, the folks that didn't have their friends anymore. So, yeah, that's something to, if I think about. Was it, go ahead.
So even in some communities like Portland, who are familiar with dense development in suburban neighborhoods, are experiencing issues around new development, in the Sellwood area, for instance, where very established old neighborhoods are seeing new development, where the city is allowing large-scale vertical development and requiring no additional parking with those developments, forcing parking into the neighborhood, drastically changing the nature of the neighborhoods and the area. How are those communities experiencing this?
Right. So the.
Some of what we're talking about is reticent of some of that, not to that degree, but how are they doing with that?
The question was referencing other cities such as Portland, where some neighborhoods are seeing some pretty dramatic changes. Specifically, apartment buildings coming in to what were formerly residential, single-family areas or low-slung main streets that have no parking, and how are the neighborhoods, neighbors responding, et cetera. There is a bit of that dynamic, and when I looked at, you know, buildings with one parking space per unit, for example, well, if it's one bedroom space, that's usually not a big deal, or a studio, but it does mean couples having one car instead of two, to, otherwise you're parking on the street somewhere. And a certain amount of street parking, you know, can be absorbed without people noticing too much, but after a while, people who are really familiar with parking in front of their house no longer can, they get frustrated, they get upset. You know, there's that saying, the only thing we like less than density is sprawl, or less than sprawl is density, right? So, you know, we, it's hard to get the right measure. The city of Portland had actually removed that parking requirement over 20 years ago, but it didn't get built. And it, it was, you can't get money, you can't borrow. I mean, that's the thing, you can, you can say you don't have to do it, but if a banker doesn't think your project will be able to repay itself, they're not going to lend you the money. And, and we saw that for quite a while. And then one developer, Gerting Edlin, did a project with what we call .7 spaces per unit with a mechanized parking garage. And they got money because they have union retirement funds. So they get money when others don't, as long as they're always using union shops to build their stuff. And so, you know, they performed for these guys before, and they said, yeah, if you can, you think it'll work, you know, you're getting good for us before, and they did it, and then everyone copied them and started dropping the ratio down farther and farther. And the tough thing, getting back to like Kate talked about, the style of place, the first several projects that went in were pretty innovative, they weren't over scaled, they fit in well to neighborhood, and then the lazy developers saw what was happening, saw they could make a money in and out quick, and they were doing the ones that, I lived in a streetcar neighborhood in Portland, when one of those went in, it was like, doesn't even look good, you know? I can deal with the parking if I got to do salt and straw in a pub, you know, I can handle that, but I mean, it's an ugly building. So, you know, those are, those are, those are real, real trade-offs and concerns, and I, I would say, it's no solace to the person who's living there today, but I myself moved into one of those neighborhoods specifically because of the new things that was, that were happening. And I know, talking, I got on my neighborhood board, and, you know, about half of us were really excited for all this new change, the other half were lamenting the change. And, you know, I live in a 1960s house right now on a, you know, commercial main street area on Capitol Highway, and my neighbors have a lot of those, you know, same kind of sentiments. I'm the one person that says, we need more apartments so they can hire another waiter at the restaurants, you know, because people would eat later. But it, yeah, it's growing pains. We are seeing nationally, the NIMBY movement has grown pretty darn strong. The Portland area is starting to see a pushback on that, they're calling YIMBY, yes in my backyard, and it's related to affordability in housing. And what the numbers are showing is, if you build an apartment building with parking, you're going to fold about 250 bucks per month into that person's rent. You have to cover the, the space that you used somehow. And so that's when it starts to come home for the housing advocates, is that, wow, if I'm, you know, is it worth it, me have to park around the block if it means there's people able to afford a roof? You know, that's kind of, that's a tough trade-off we have to get ourselves into. It's tough that we have to get there, but we're kind of there. So I don't have an easy answer for you, but it is change, and I don't, we haven't modeled anything at this level that would create one of those type of conditions, like you say in Sellwood or, you know, Division Street in Portland. But we have made some modifications, and, you know, getting down to one space per unit, that's tight without transit. You have transit, but it could be enhanced. Current 1.75, that's a pretty suburban standard, we see that in places with zero transit, and it works. So, you know, you, there's definitely some room within the comfort realm to reduce parking requirements because there are people that don't drive, people that can't drive, and, you know, they're being forced to pay for a spot. So you have a little bit of room there before it's, it's a neighborhood impact. But, yeah, when you get down there to half a space, less than one space per unit, you're going to get spillover. Long answer, short question. Okay, I'm being a reminder of the time, because I think we have, we had a, I think, a 90-minute meeting, and we have it 93, 94 minutes now. So I can keep talking forever, but, so, anything you want to add, Kate, that I missed? Okay.
So did you get enough from us to understand kind of what some of our questions, concerns, and ideas for going forward? You said that there's going to be the next steps have to do with refinement and then bringing this back around, is that correct?
So the question there was, have we learned enough from this group to, to move forward and, and we, and come back with, with next steps? So, yeah, we are, we are at this next phase, going to start further exploring, what does a code look like that has certain spaces where you limit drive-throughs, and some of these rear, rear access ways, that seems to have some merit. We're not going to look at redevelopment of mobile home parks and things like that, we got that message from you. And, and I'm trying to kind of gauge from these conversations where I am feeling some support for some of the things like the design standards, I look at head nods, I look at head shakes. I wish I had a survey instrument to ask. We're going to do some work sessions with our advisory committee after this, and, and with staff to then go and refine this so we can have that next level. And then, you know, the idea is, that gives us some toolbox items to share with the public, take the temperature, refine, get back together with you guys. So, so the short answer is, yes, but any pet ideas, anything that you've been thinking about, like this site is one of the great examples. A little, you know, details like that, you know, if you, either same now or relay them to Nate to get to us that want us to research, we'd love to.
But in this one piece, a lot of people want to work to live. And getting those guaranteed jobs and things is very important to people, which would have a cumulative impact on everything else. Try as far as more opportunities, to get people working where they live.
The, so the comment there was, people want to be able to live closer to where they work, and having the right kind of jobs should be a priority. And then that's, I think, the first message that you relayed, Madam Mayor. Interestingly, we got a real similar, real similar questions and thoughts from our advisory committee, and actually shared with, with Nate a two-or-lever prime time map that I did develop last week, a fourth scenario with a theoretical fake zone that was about 35% office, have different scales, and then mixed use in some apartments, that I haven't been able to get to my economist or to my traffic consultant, but I wanted to see kind of what it looked like, and, you know what my numbers were, Nate? I have it here, I wrote it down. The idea was, I looked at if we really kind of took everything around our three nodes and said, if it's less than $30 per square foot to buy it, meaning if a person's got $30 square foot land, they've got a pretty nice investment, they're not going to sell. If it's less than that, is there potential there for it to redevelop? And assuming some certain ratios and how often that happens, developed this, can't really quite see this from there, but this kind of purple map, just a quick ink blot, Rorschach test. And, and I ended up with about 2,900 homes and 3,800 jobs. So really reversing that, doing a lot more jobs than housing, and I could even go a little farther than that. So, but I needed, I needed to get with my economics consultant and talk to him about feasibility, and then talk to my traffic folks about it. I think traffic-wise, it's probably great because jobs are a magnet for trips, housing is generators, people going out, and so anything you bring into the city that's a job is likely to intercept trips. And even if it means maybe there's more activity at one intersection, it's a much shorter drive than someone going to Salem or Dayton or Donald or wherever. So, that's my gut, but I got to check with my traffic consultant.
But it also includes low-value property.
That, yeah, that was in there, so it has to come out. I didn't put the floodplain in.
We're not talking about hospitals.
So as you know, we'll be back, you're not done, we have a lot more work to do, we appreciate your input, we appreciate all the time that it takes to do this stuff. It's, it's not quite the same as watching the greatest, great British baking show, but it's important to the future of Kaiser, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.